We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you can call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Lori Krenski.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
You'll rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Ross.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone, this is a meeting of the Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. Additionally, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. We always appreciate having our community here with us as we conduct the Riverside business of the Riverside Local School District. Please know there is no item on our agenda tonight that would require masking in our schools for any of our students or staff. Masking in our schools is strictly optional. Our superintendent, Dr. Kales, announced this last week, and this continues to be our plan moving forward throughout the school year. On behalf of the board, I hope my fellow, and I hope my fellow board members will not mind me saying, the Riverside Local School District, as of this time, have no plans to require masks in our schools. First thing up is the approval of the minutes for the July 28th, 2021 special meeting. If I make a motion to approve, if I can have a second, please.
Second.
Mad rush. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, let's call the roll, please.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden. Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Motion carried. I would like to make a motion to move the public participation to the before old business, please, if I could have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Grassi. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, that will bring us to participation. As we said at the beginning of the meeting, we thank everyone for coming here tonight. We're about to start public participation. We value the opportunity to receive input from everyone, but the public participation portion of our meeting needs to be orderly and civil. We do have ground rules for this portion of the meeting. Prior to making your comments to the board, please state your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Your time to make a statement to the board is limited to one three-minute period. There will be, on the screen behind us, a timer to help you keep track. You cannot assign time, some, or any of your time to anyone else. Your time may be used to share information with the board and make comments to the board about the business of the Riverside Local School District. If you have a question, we will direct it to the appropriate district representative who will investigate the matter and get back to you later. We do not answer questions during the public participation portion of the meeting. If comments become overly repetitive or it gets too late, we reserve the right to end public participation so that we can conduct the rest of our business tonight. We take the business of the Riverside Local School District very seriously, so we ask that everyone behave in the same manner. When you speak, we ask that you can line up and go over to the podium, and we'll go ahead and get started.
Do you move that hand sanitizer to the other side so people can get through between Chuck and them? Thanks, Chuck.
If anyone would like to go to the podium and have something to say, please head up.
Evening. James Chikinetti, resident, Jamesville Towns trustee as well. Members of the board, I came here tonight to personally thank you and to show support for your decision to protect our rights to choose what is best for our children medically. Brought a few friends as well. I wanted to thank you for putting the decision back in our hands where it belongs rather than government. As an elected office holder myself, I believe we are service of the people, not elected to tell them what to do, but rather ensure they are empowered and free to do what they feel is best for them and their families. Politicians like the wine and government agencies, especially those run by non-elected people like the Ohio Department of Health or Lake County Health Department, should never be allowed to take away our right to make decisions for our families. If parents aren't comfortable, there's plenty of choices. Online options, homeschool, send your child to school in a mask. Now, let me quickly share some important data, and let me preface this by saying and making it clear, the death of any child is sad and tragic. I have two myself, but that doesn't change these facts. In the entire state of Ohio, since January of 2020, just eight children out of three million children have died with COVID. In Ohio, the survival rate of children with COVID is 99.995%. In Lake County specifically, zero deaths of children with COVID, zero. In Lake County, since COVID started, just 37 children out of over 50,000 have been hospitalized with COVID. In Lake County, we have a 100% survival rate, less than 1% hospitalization rate. Point of sharing this is to show clearly the fear, outrage, and ridiculous pressure to mask up our kids is not warranted in the least. That doesn't buy, despite the fear mongering media from our governor and the risk to our children is negligible, virtually nonexistent. Someone wants to wear a mask, or mask their child, fine, their choice, that's a parent's decision, the way it should always be. Our rights don't take a backseat to someone else's fear. I know you guys are facing backlash as a result for standing up for us and our right to decide what is best for our children. I always tell my kids, doing what is right isn't always easy. So again, thank you for standing up for us and our right to choose for our children. Please know that many of us have your backs and sincerely appreciate what you're doing and what is right. And from what I hear from across the district, the vast majority of people chose to freedom child space today. That's all I have. And I have to... I look forward to seeing more of the official of over 300 signatures from people in the district supporting mask choice for children.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Britt Pinch. I live in Concord Township. I've been a fairly new resident to Concord Township. And I want to thank the board members for all the hard work that they've been doing. I'd like to thank all the teachers, all the frontline folks that have been, you know, working with people that have had COVID. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight to talk about what's going on in school. I think a lot of people have a lot of different opinions. I think what's something that we can all agree on is that we want our kids in school. We want all of our kids to be able to learn. And I know that there's a lot of misinformation out there. I know there's a lot of changing things going on. People will talk about, you know, is this right, that right? You know, my political party says this, my political party says that. It all comes down to, we want our kids in school. We want our kids to be able to learn. If you look at what's going on in Lake County, you'll actually see that in the first week of school, we had a bunch of kids already being sent home and being quarantined because of COVID. Yes, they may not die, and thank God for that. But for God's sake, let's put masks on the kids because we don't want them getting sent home!
Get all the kids sent home with the flu, do you? This is not the flu.
This is not the flu.
This is his time to stay home. Let's allow him to speak, please. Allow him to speak, please.
All right. I work at Lucrezol, and I manage a group of individuals. They're all PhD chemists, and I have been working through the pandemic this entire time. We've managed to be able to keep all of our people safe because we followed the science, we followed masking, and we followed every social protocol that we had to. It wasn't easy, it wasn't fun, but we did it anyway. And because of that, we've had zero transmission on our campus. Now, that is something good to say, right? But we've had people that have had COVID, and it's because in their personal life, they've gone out and done things that didn't follow the science. It's just simple science, guys. You don't like the government telling you what to do, but I bet when you get out here, you'll put a seatbelt on. The government told you to do that. I bet you don't like your kids smoke. The government told you not to do that.
Cigarettes are FDA approved.
But I mean, you don't let your children smoke them. I mean, let's say some children smoke cigarettes when I was at this school. In the bathroom. But it's also our choice. We have to have our kids, we have to go to learn.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Virginia. I have a son in high school and...
Can't hear you.
My name is Virginia. I have a son in high school and in the online learning program. Thank you for offering that, I appreciate it. I am an RN. I worked on the COVID units. I have seen a lot of death this year, and I'm glad you guys don't take this so seriously because I'm tired of watching people die. I urge the board to look at what's happening down south with the pediatric ICU beds that are completely full, and they're sending kids home that cannot breathe because of how much spread is happening and there are children dying. I am so tired of death this year, but I understand that people have been misinformationed. So I will read to you, hopefully it might change somebody's mind, something from Newsweek. We use Newsweek in school. We use it as a learning tool, right? I'm gonna read it because I, while I'm talking, I get emotional about this. As for mask mandating violating somebody's personal liberty, there was a 115-year-old president in 1905, a citizen argued, in the Jacobson versus Massachusetts case, that a smallpox inoculation mandate infringed on his rights, but the Supreme Court upheld the England Department of Health authority to require vaccine under the 10th Amendment. "In every well," or this is a quotation, "in every well-armed society charged with the duty of conserving the safety of its members, the rights of the individual, and the respect of his liberty may at times, under the pressure of great dangers, be subject to their, to such restraint to be enforced by reasonable regulations as the safety of the general public may demand." That's the Circuit Court Judge John Casten, and that is rule, the rule I was quoting. "The Constitution gives states the ability to protect the welfare and safety and health of the public, and in the face of a global pandemic, courts have found that mask mandates are justified measures since the mandates also don't prohibit a person from gathering or sharing their opinions, except if the person refuses to wear a mask, it's not a free speech issue, and Jacobson's provides a longstanding precedent that the right to liberty is not without restriction. I would dare you to hold the hand of somebody who's dying from COVID and knows they won't make it, and then have the same opinion about masks that you have right now."
Did you mean pneumonia?
No.
Please let her finish.
I'm sorry. I have seen a lot of death this year, and I am scared to death that we're gonna see it in children. We are lucky so far that we haven't had as bad as other states, but as they show in the South, look at the data in the South, they've been open longer than we have, and they don't have those mandates.
Let her finish.
And there are children dying in ICUs in Dallas, there's no pediatric ICU beds, and for a while, there was like 100 mile radius where they didn't have pediatric ICU beds.
Let her finish!
I'm an RN. You can all take care of your family.
Hey, folks, folks. Everyone has three minutes. Everybody, everybody has three minutes. Please have a decent decorum in here. No matter what the opinion is of anybody that's speaking here that has the courage to come up, let them speak. Just let them speak, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kales. You and I had a conversation on the phone about a week ago. My name is Douglas Conges, resident in Concord Township. I have three kids, school-aged kids that go over to Riverside Schools. So, you know, and first off, you know, following the lady that just was at the podium, you know, the one thing I would say is that we all have to respect everybody else's opinion, right? I mean, obviously, it's very concerning to me, and I understand that it's concerning to you and this gentleman here. Whoever, whoever chooses to wear a mask, that's your right. But one thing that you said is you said, "Follow the science." What science are you reading? Because I could have, I could have brought a stack of peer-reviewed studies that say, A, masks provide zero protection from any virus, right? I could have brought some studies that say that there's tiny little holes, and I'm not picking any, by the way, but this is reality. There's tiny little holes in the mask, and that's why the virus little particles are 100 times smaller. So let me put you in a different scenario. It's, I'm gonna go build a above-ground pool, right? I'm gonna go build a above-ground pool, but I'm gonna build it with fencing. It's got big holes in it. Then I go to water it, guess what's gonna happen? All the water's gonna run out. The masks don't do any good. I listened to a video yesterday where a lady talked about the fact that she is an expert on masks, and doctors and nurses are not experts. She's the one that the hospitals consult. And, and, and the nurse that spoke before her in the video laid her mask on the desk. Obviously, now, who knows how many germs? My hands had germs on them. I got mine non-elected, and, and, but she laid it, she said, "So, right there, if I were in the hospital and I were monitoring people in the hospital, I would have written her out." And she was up there, obviously, saying that they should wear a mask. So, at the end of the day, I would just say this, that it's, it's just, you know, if you feel comfortable with your child wearing a mask, then wear a mask. But the one thing I can tell you is this, is that all the studies I read and all the, all the people I listen to that are, you know, supposed experts, kids are gonna touch their mask on average during six hours, probably four or 500 times. You know, at the Lake County Health Board the other day, a guy gave, gave a, you know, a lecture on how masks can protect you, but at the same time, during an hour and 20 minutes, he touched his mask 140 times. So he's breathing in his own germs, and he's also breathing in his own exhaust, which is, that's not good for the kids. My kids didn't wear a mask once last year, you know, all three of them, because they all had exemptions and they weren't sick. They didn't miss a day of school all last year, so they were good. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Timothy Hickey. My address is 175 Riverside Drive. I'm a Riverside graduate. I'm a United States Marine veteran, former police officer. Former police officer. I'm a mechanical engineer with a background in data analytics. I do seismic calculations on a daily basis. I wanted, first, I didn't want to speak until I heard a PhD doctor, so for everybody here, I would also like to point out, I am a Baron, Timothy Ryan Hickey. So if you want to be called a doctor for a campus that has been shut down for two years and tell me that there has been no transmissions at your campus, then feel free, but you will address me as Baron as well. Now, I want to talk about the mask efficiency, efficacy, however you say it. Ms. RN, why can't I go visit my father who is in the hospital without a mask right now? Why can't I go visit him with a mask if masks work? I can't, and you know that they don't. So, the mask efficacy is 12% with your cloth mask, cloth mask. It is 60% with a properly fitted N95 mask, which you are not wearing. It is, when it is not properly fitted, it drops down to 3%. When we talk about masking our children, we are talking about child abuse. Children's bodies are not meant to be in, they're only shot for six hours a day. No human body is meant for that. I specifically watched you touch your mask and then put it back on. As an RN, you should know that that is not proper mask-wearing, so you are not qualified to give that type of advice. Now, you also mentioned the many, many deaths that you have experienced as an RN here in Lake County. Since COVID has started, there have been 400 deaths here in Lake County. I'm guessing you weren't part of maybe one percent of those. You have seen it. Those people are eight years old. We're not talking about eight-year-olds. We're talking about kids. Now, I wouldn't dare anybody to challenge the data on the child to adult transmission of COVID because it doesn't exist. Children are not at risk. I commend this board for leaving it as parental choice. Nobody in this room has any authority to tell me what is best for my child other than me. I commend the board. I thank everybody for coming, except for the PhD who definitely fabricated his Lucrezol statistics on a campus that was closed down for two years, and an RN who virtue signaled every second that she was up here without following her own mask protocols. If there is ever a mask mandate, make it a N95, make it properly fitted. Let's not virtue signal. This isn't fake, like these kids deserve to breathe, and they deserve their freedoms, and I'm not everybody give that up.
Hello, my name is Michelle Marquess. I'm a township resident and a mother of four. Two of my children have graduated, and I have two at Lamoos Middle School. Just a quick story I wanted to let you know about. It was when the wine got rid of our mask mandates. And I took my 12-year-old son into this store, and I turned and I looked at him, and he had his mask on. And I said, "Baby, take the mask off." He said, "No." And I said, "We don't have to wear it, take it off." His response to me was, "I'm more comfortable with it on." This is terrible, what this is happening to our kids. It's psychological abuse. And if you look at the medical terms, and Fauci even said himself, he does not know any year from now, what a mess this is gonna do to our kids mentally. And we're not even talking about the overdoses and the depression in our childrens. And the suicide rates. In our children. And I just want to thank you, and there's a lot of people standing behind you for giving us the choice to mask our kids.
Hi, my name is Kathy Gero, and I have three grandchildren in the Riverside School District. And I'm here because I want to personally thank you for your decision to not mandate masks in this new school year. I wholeheartedly stand behind you, I support you, I agree that there should be no mask mandates, but a decision left to the parents, the guardians, whoever is in place to make those decisions. And I would just ask you to please continue to stand firm and to stand strong on this issue. And again, I truly thank you from the bottom of my heart for doing the right thing for our children and our grandchildren.
Hello, my name is Daniel Mathen. I've been a Concord resident for eight years. I have three children, one at Lamoos and one at Riverside. Want to thank the opportunity to address the board, speak with everyone tonight. I think everybody knows where I stand with that. I think it's pretty obvious. First off, I'd like to come up and say, I worked with Dr. Britt Pinch at Lucrezol. I'm a doctor as well. I'm not a medical doctor, but that man went to school for 10 years, and he worked his ass off to earn that degree. He is a scientist of the highest order, and I respect him, and I respect what Lucrezol did. We did not close down for two years. Our campus is not closed. Our research and development, work, I work, I manage in that group. I manage 25 people that work in that group. We have been onsite except for three months where we were mandated to go home. We have worked through the pandemic. We are a successful company, and one of the reasons we've made it through this pandemic is zero onsite transmissions, which is true. We wore our masks. They do work. One mask doesn't work. Two masks work. My mask would test you, okay? Three would work better. Hey, 80% transmission reduction if you wear both of your masks. Look, everybody has the right to choose what they want to do with their children. I respect that because I respect the parent's right to choose. I do respect that, okay? I do respect that. What I worry about is not necessarily the illness, because I think some of the facts are right. Children are less likely to become seriously ill. However, the quarantine situation becomes an issue. I've seen this, okay? Other people I know have had this issue. Exposures create, you have to go home, you have to become tested. You get a large number of people that are not able to, to work or go to school. Yes, companies have been affected by this, their operations have hurt. Well, we will end up as, what I am afraid of, I will tell you what I am afraid of. I am afraid of remote learning. The kids need to be in the schools to learn. It must be in the school. If we're not careful, this is what I'm afraid of. My kid gets sent home, your kids get sent home, we all go to remote situation. How many parents can take off work to be home with their children to get a good education? It's damn hard. I did it for a year. I just don't want to do it again, okay? I respect your choices, I respect everyone's opinion in this room. I want to say thank you for letting me talk and not interrupt you. Thank you very much. Didn't touch my mask, did you?
Well, my name is Charlie Brown. I live on Taylor Road in Cleveland Township. My husband and I both attended Riverside, and our two children also graduated from Riverside. I have a different topic that brought me here tonight. I've heard a lot of concern in the community about possible curriculum that is being taught. I don't want to base my knowledge on misinformation or rumors, so that's why I bring this before the board. I believe we are a conservative constituency in the district, and we do not want CRT or the LVGTQ. I've been assured that at this time, that does not exist. But again, just like mask-wearing, I believe that this is a moral issue that rests with the authority of the parents. The education system is to focus on core subjects like English, math, and science. And I just ask our administration to be aware of what is being told to our students that is not part of the stated curriculum. So my question is, is there any of this agenda in the curriculum? I've been told, no. Is there any of it that is being proposed in the future curriculum? Or is this being espoused by any individual teachers in their classrooms? I know of a local district where a teacher was teaching this when it was not in the curriculum. Thankfully, the students went home and reported it to their parents. The administration said they were not aware of it until it was brought to their attention. So I just ask that this administration would guard our students from such harmful material being placed in the curriculum. Thank you.
Lori Richards. I have three children, all three of them went to Riverside. My next one is a senior this year. Also a small business owner. I own 1922 Coffee and Brew. I feel I wasn't even going to speak tonight. I was in the home of this, and, you know, you want to be informed. I think most of my friends know, and thank you, Gabe, for inviting me tonight, that I feel like I'm in a really good balance on respecting both opinions. You know, as adults, it's our job to teach the kids. We need to listen, we need to respect, we don't always have to be disrespectful. I've seen it over the past year and half, tear families apart, tear friends apart, tear good people apart, which I think is really sad, you know? Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk tonight because that's a privilege as well. And, you know, we had a bit of experience last year at the high school. You know, my son has asthma, he wore his mask, you know, and he got pulled in by the principal, and we got a phone call to us. And it wasn't a great conversation, but, you know, we dealt with it, even though we don't believe he needs to wear a mask, we dealt with it, you know? And I talked to him, and I said, you know, you have to respect both sides, teachers, faculty. It was a brand-new thing, they're dealing with things that are, are brand-new to them and dealing with situations they're trying to figure out as well. Parents, we're trying to deal with protecting our children and doing what we feel is right for our family. It wasn't a good situation, we're over it, we're onto a new year. Do I want him to wear a mask? Absolutely not. But do I also feel like last year Riverside had things in place? They had sanitizers, they had, you know, things in place to help the kids to, to do whatever they can. Could our situation have been a little better in that particular one? Yeah. It, it, it could have, period. But, you know, it is, it's tearing people apart, and I think that's the point that I wanted to make tonight, is I think everybody truly sometimes just needs to take a step back and, and take a breath and see what you're doing, and, you know, and just think. You know, outside of the school with masks... of the school with masks, did I have to deal with it in my business? Hundred percent, absolutely. Did I want to enforce it? I did not. Did I have people yelling and screaming at me, being rude? Hundred percent. Did I have them being rude to my guests? Hundred percent. What did I do then? Please leave. You know, whatever your opinion is, you gotta be respectful. You know, let people have their opinions. Is it hard for the schools to continue? Absolutely. Is it hard for me as a small business? Do I know if I'm even gonna make it through this year again? I have no idea. But I will do everything in my power to protect my children, to protect my family, to protect my friends that support me, and to protect my business. But I will always do it in a respectful manner. So, you know, I hope everybody can think that way too a little bit. Do you deserve to share your opinion and be listened to? Absolutely. Isn't that one also our breakthrough? Is being able to be heard? So, thank you.
Hello, everybody. Debbie Sprepa, Pansville Township resident. My daughter is in fifth grade, just started today at Buckeye Elementary. She is 10 years old. My father, Penn Sprepa, is a teacher here at John R., I guess. He's been here for COVID 20 years. I'm here to speak about my daughter. She was expelled to go back to school today with no masks. Last year, when online learning started, her grades declined immensely. Her attention declined. It was horrible. I could not stay at home. I was a full-time employee at the clinic and I couldn't go home to be with her. So I had to have my grandmother help. What grandmother wants to help monitor their grandchild and make sure their learning pulled out, she couldn't. She worked third shift, so she had to sleep. So it's very imperative that they be at school. Her grades declined. Hopefully this year they'll be better. And then on just another note, I had contracted COVID in July. She was with me since I had gotten it and did not get any symptoms, any signs, or contract it. Neither did my significant other, who was with me since the day I had gotten it. So you tell me, how does it contract from one individual to another? His aunt was admitted with COVID but died with an pneumonia. How come? Very unfortunate. I've had a friend overdose from depression, my brother's girlfriend, and now my brother has gone down a slippery slope because of it. I can all agree it's been a rough year and a half. The masks, yes. You want your child to wear them, fine, that's your decision, their decision. My daughter couldn't wait to get that thing off her. Last year, she was almost suspended the week prior to the end of school for not wearing a mask for five minutes. Called up the principal's office and threatened with a suspension. Ridiculous. Then they get sent home for 10 days. Are they learning? The PCR tests are not accurate to decipher whether it's flu or COVID. That is all you know. CDC has said it. So the results of COVID positive tests should not be upheld. If a child is sick and they could stay home, do they have to be sent home for 10 days? No. My symptoms went away after two days. Two days. I'm not a nurse, not a doctor, but I've been around plenty of people who have had it and their symptoms are null. Some people get worse, but then it turns to pneumonia and they should be treated with medication, but they're not. They didn't give me anything.
Nothing.
Nothing. They treated it as the flu and I asked many nurses, "You're gonna treat it like the flu?" Yes. That's all I got to say. No masks, thank you for sending us this.
Hi, my name is Sharon Schinzel and I had two children that graduated from here, 2012 and 2014. I just, when this whole thing started last spring, I mean, I was one of the people that was home with the mask and didn't see my family and scared of everything and I just, I don't know, after, now I'm learning so much more about what's been going on this past year and it's not about, I mean, it's turned into the masked versus unmasked, the vaccinated versus the vaccinated. And now the unvaccinated are being blamed for spreading or making this variant, which is my belief untrue. I've looked at, I'm a doctor, I mean, I do have a bachelor's degree in business, but I don't, I've read so much and these doctors are being silenced, these scientists are being silenced, virologists, epidemiologists, I mean, there's been silence from all over the world and treatments are being silenced. They're treating COVID people, well, first of all, you don't even know if they have COVID because, right, the test isn't accurate, but they're treating them, they're hiding treatments. They're hiding ivermectin and they're making it impossible to get, they're hiding hygrosaccharicin and my husband went online when he was there three weeks ago, I don't know if he had COVID, we didn't get tested, and we got the medicine, ivermectin, and we found supplements in that, it was myfreedoctor.com, but there's all kinds of doctors. There's America's Frontline Doctors, there's FLCCC Alliance that are treating people, that are saving people, that are keeping them out of the hospital. Start looking at the people that are, why are we being hid from, why are they suppressing all this information on these treatments? They want everybody to get vaccinated. I don't know, I guess Chris is there, but I guess I am. But I just, I just can't believe what's going on and how plain it is to see and I don't see, I mean, my brothers have been vaccinated, my mom's been vaccinated and she's even aware of everything going on and I don't know why she got vaccinated, I'm worried about her. But my brother just got COVID and is hopefully recuperating from it, but he wouldn't call the myfreedoctor.com. But anyway, my husband got better, don't know if he had COVID. I had a problem even getting my, his ivermectin at the pharmacy because, you know, that's gonna be outlawed. My gosh, we gotta give him remdesivir, which actually, I was looking the other night, and it might cause kidney damage. The only treatment Fauci has said that was okay in the hospital was remdesivir. And they've killed these people. I just, I don't know. I've never been passionate about anything. I mean, I can add that. I never come to a party, I don't mean that, but something to take a stand and I just, I mean, not those, I'm so glad we set the place.
Hi, I'm Julie St. John. I live in Pansville Township. I have three children, my daughter's a freshman at Riverside and two boys who are going into like their grade. I am not a Pansville Township trustee, I didn't bring a 30-person posse, I'm going up against a very tough crowd here, but I came up here and I'm speaking and advocating for what I believe in strongly and that is protecting our children. And I think that it's very well-known, the first line of defense against this virus, I mean, there's still a lot that we don't know, but the first line of defense is the vaccine. I got it for my daughter who's 14, got it for myself, my significant other has it. We're fully vaccinated, we go to work, we're mandated to wear masks at work. It feels extremely wrong to me to have children under 12 who are not eligible for the vaccine to have to send them to school unmasked, completely unprotected. We see what's going on from one school to the next of, I mean, Willow Beach Lake was open for four days, they had 25 cases, 82 students quarantined. I think in this room, I think the only thing we can really come to an agreement on is that we want our kids in school. My kids were home for a year and a half without remote school. I don't know how that's gonna be sustainable. This thing is twice as contagious. One person can infect up to eight. It is, to me, not rocket science, that yes, this mask is not going to eradicate completely, absolutely not, but it will lessen, it will mitigate. My children are the most important thing in the world, so obviously I want to do absolutely everything I can to protect them. The issue with this virus is that you just do not know how it's gonna manifest. You can be completely asymptomatic, you can be on a ventilator, you just don't know how it's gonna manifest. So, I mean, I guess, I know that this isn't a forum here, but I guess my big question is, is like, and I don't know if you can address it later, but will you guys ever impose a mask mandate or is it like so extreme that you just happily will? And, you know, I guess what I don't understand, Pansville City has a mask mandate and taking all these precautions and some of these schools have the air filtration systems, Mener and Willow Beach Lake have reversed their scans, we're right near them, they're getting the same information as our board is from the Lake County Health Department. So I'm just wondering what it's gonna take because this is, it's just, it doesn't feel right sending our kids in just completely unprotected against this virus. At least, you know, do what Sugar and Ballas and Zolin, I believe it is, are doing is at least mask the kids until the vaccine is available, hopefully later this year.
Send your kids in a mask.
And unfortunately, that's not how this works. My kid can wear a mask.
Let her speak, please.
Time's up.
I wish I could have the luxury of doing that, but I will lose my job. So it's not that easy.
Open enrollment county, go to Pansville City.
I actually did look into sending my kids to Pansville City.
Do it.
But it's not an option.
It's absolutely an option, we're open enrollment here.
I just, I can't even deal with this.
Time's up, though.
Is there anyone else? All right, thank you, everybody, for your, everyone who came to speak today. That will be the end of public participation.
Let's go.
Next up will be Old Business, if anyone has anything. All right. New Business?
I do have something for New Business. It's more informational than it is necessarily for action tonight. And I have a copy for Nick as well, so we can put it in the notes.
So I think I'm gonna go with the microphone just because I have a firm mouth to say. So we're all aware that the CDC quote-unquote has mandated that we wear masks on the bus. And so I asked our legal counsel to provide me with the justification for that decision. And this, I'm sure most of you understand from a constitutional perspective, the federal government has strict delineated rights and responsibilities and whatever is outside of what has been given to the federal government is reserved for the states or the people. So I just was curious to understand what the justification was regarding the, this mandate, kind of out of the blue from our perspective, and what really gives them the authority to do this. So I was provided with four references to the US Code and I apologize, I'll try to get through this quickly, I have underlined, I think, are the role and points for the members of the board. And so the first one is US Code 78.2, measures in the event of inadequate local, maybe start from the top. This is 42 CFR 70.2, measures in the event of inadequate local control. Whenever the director of the Center of Disease Control Prevention determines that, determines that the measures taken by health authorities by any state or possession, including clinical subdivisions thereof, are insufficient to prevent the spread of any other communicable diseases from such state or possession to any other state or possession. Again, that is interstate travel, this is not intrastate. Schools are interstate, strictly within the state. So I kind of scratched my head, is that being one of the justifications? And I'll try to speed up. 42 CFR 71.31, general provisions, and I will provide this to Mr. Carline so he can put this online so that people are interested in seeing it, you won't just have to rely on this. But it starts out just saying upon arrival at a US port. And then it doesn't talk about anything else that I could see beyond that. So this is something, you know, somebody or somebody coming in to the United States from elsewhere. Again, I didn't see how that was relevant to state local control or anything. So again, it seems kind of spurious that they would, this would be something that would be used to justify the CDC stance. The next one is 42 CFR 71.32, persons, carriers, and things. Whenever the director has reason to believe that any arriving person is infected with or has been exposed to any of the communicable diseases, and it does align, eliciting executive order and lots of other verbiage. But again, that's somebody arriving from overseas into the United States. Again, it does not deal with, I don't see how that's frankly relevant to the CDC stance. Later in that same section, whenever the director has reason to believe that any arriving carrier or article or thing onboard the carrier is or may be infected, again, it's talking about things coming from overseas, how is that relevant to what's going on in the local state area? Okay, so the last of the code that was provided is US, 42 US Code 264, regulations to control communicable diseases. The part that, again, it's talking about the surgeon general and the group of the secretary and things like that, but it says spread of communicable diseases from foreign countries into the state possessions or from one state or possession into any other state or possession. Again, is it not interstate relevant? And again, the CDC, the federal government does not have jurisdiction beyond what is provided in the Constitution. So at the end of this, it says, at the end of this particular part of the US Code, it says preemption. Nothing in this section or Section 266 of this title or the regulations promulgated under such sections may be construed as superseding any provision under state law. Okay? So the last thing I would point out is an excerpt from the Ohio Vice Code, it's 5501.01, and it's about public transportation. And I won't read the whole thing, but the last line says, "Public transportation does not include school bus transportation or charter or sightseeing services." So I put this down as a marker for your consideration, I am going to see what other options may be pursuable, but there are a lot of things at risk with what's going on in our country. And having the federal government usurp and assume powers when, I mean, I'm not a genius, but I have a good background, there is nothing that is relevant to, there's nothing to substantiate in my opinion, this usurpation of authority and I think that is very dangerous. We all want to be safe, we all want our children to grow up and be healthy, we want our civilization, our country to thrive, but we're not gonna thrive in the way that we were founded if we don't force the federal government back into the constraints the Constitution has established for. So I'm just putting this down as a marker for your consideration and we get more.
All right, I also had something in New Business that I wanted to discuss. I had discussed it with Dr. Kales the other day and with Dan McIntyre, our legal counsel. I had, we all know the first few weeks of school can be brutal in the buildings without air conditioning in particular, and it made me look at our dress code in our student handbook. Page 19 and page 20 of the student handbook were quite honestly really concerning to me as a parent. Page 19 and page 20 of the student handbook were, quite honestly, really concerning to me as a parent of a daughter and two boys. But especially for my daughter, who's trying to, I'm trying to make sure I'm raising a child who's confident. And I'm really bothered by what I read in our dress code. There are some things in here that are almost downright archaic. We talk about the way a girl's dressed as being a disruption to a classroom. And to me, there's nothing that's acceptable about that. So I have asked Dr. Kales to please take a look at what our dress code looks like. Because the fact of the matter is, these buildings are horribly hot. We've got so many girls that I talk to and parents who I talk to that say their girls worry about wearing pants to school because they're concerned that if their shorts are not long enough, that they're going to be sent home, or they're going to go to the office because a bra strap is showing, or something like that. And I am just not okay with, as a woman, number one, with our girls being told that that's not appropriate, that their bra strap is a distraction to the boy sitting next to them. Right, oh gosh, there's a bra strap, I cannot possibly concentrate. So I just want to make sure that we're addressing our dress, or we are addressing what our student handbook looks like for our dress codes, so that it's, number one, part of this century, and more in line with the way that our girls should understand that how they dress should not impact the students sitting next to them. As long as they're not, obviously, we're not wearing bikinis to school, we're not wearing inappropriate clothes to school. There still needs to be appropriate dress, but our handbook needs some revisions. Sorry?
It is school.
Correct, it is, but they also deserve to be comfortable as well.
A lot of those schools aren't air conditioned.
No, it's extremely hot.
So I believe, I believe that some of this is language as well.
It is language, yes.
It's appropriate language that would be, you know, consistent with the times that we live in. I would, I would wholeheartedly have us look at that and see what we can come up with, I would agree. So, thank you.
Does anyone have any other new business? All right, that'll take us to the Board of Education Committee and Liaison Report. The first thing is the Superintendent's Business Advisory. Dr. Bassetich was kind enough to send me some information as we get ready for the new school year with Business Advisory Committee. The first meeting is slated for the end of September. We plan to have the meeting in the new school store at Riverside High School. Several members of the Business Advisory Committee provided feedback and guidance on this project and class, which is the principles of business. This will be an ongoing project, so further guidance will be necessary as we aim to expand the reach of the project. We'll continue to work, continue our work group model, smaller groups meeting more often than just quarterly whole group meetings. We'll be focusing on connecting our Business Advisory Committee members with our students to provide work-based experiences. We're working on an industry-recognized credential program at the high school, and we'll need Business Advisory Committee expertise and connections to help support our students. We're also looking to expand the group, and so we'd like to keep things on the smaller side, but looking for input from a variety of all career areas. So that will be exciting to get that started again. Next is Mr. Miley with Curriculum and Programming and Boosters.
Okay, this past month, we, we did not have a curriculum meeting with the opening of school. We have one scheduled for September 28th, and there was no booster meeting.
Okay, thank you. Buildings and Grounds Operations alumni, Mr. Hack.
Our next meeting is on the same day as the curriculums meeting on September 28th. And there was not an alumni association meeting.
Policy Committee Strategic Plan, Mrs. Kreneski.
At this time, we have no policies, new policies to review. I'm sure there'll be some upcoming. And then as far as strategic plan, we were going to try to meet this month, but that's been postponed and will be rescheduled.
Yeah, actually, we were supposed to have a presentation prior to the meeting at 6:00. I noticed it wasn't on anybody's schedule, so that's a good thing, because we canceled it anyway.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to Mr. Kales and the Superintendent's Report.
All right, these are our current enrollment numbers. I wanted to pass it out to the board. I just want to point out a few things at Riverview and also Parkside. The last time we spoke, we presented to the board the need to hire a few more teachers to drive some of our larger classes down to a manageable number. Also with that in mind, with the COVID situation, we don't want a lot of kids in the classroom, as much as we can. In any school, even the new ones, it is a challenge to social distance kids. So for us, we've moved out some furniture that we don't necessarily need. And we've moved desks apart in as much as we can. But I wanted to point out that the four teachers that were hired, one was at fourth grade at Parkside. If you look at the numbers there, you're going to see that we added an extra section. Also at Riverview, kindergarten, we had 122 children registered for kindergarten at Riverview with only four sections. And if you do the math, that would be 30.5 students in four sections in each classroom. Now, can you imagine trying to teach 30, almost 31 children, kindergartners, in a classroom? So by adding another section, we were able to drive that number down. And you can see what the numbers, how they broke down now, or how they, how they look today. We have 25, 23, 24, 25, and 25. If you go to second grade, same thing. We had 113 kids with four sections, and if you do that math, it's 28 and a quarter children in that classroom. With that extra teacher, the numbers are now 22, 23, 22, 23, and 23. Third grade at Riverview, we had four sections. If you do the math, it was 27.5, because we had 110 kids enrolled in that, in third grade at Riverview. With the extra teacher, we were able to drive that number down to 22, 22, 23, 21, and 22. On behalf of the administration and also the teachers, and I'm sure the parents are happy about that as well, I want to thank the board for allowing us to pursue those, those teachers to drive the numbers down. If you look at the balance, aside maybe from a couple of the classes, but they're in the higher grades, our numbers are looking pretty good. We did have quite a bit of an increase at Riverview this year, too. And we're, we're busting at the seams pretty much right now. And what I would say to the board is we need to look seriously at the second phase of our, of our facility plan. And, you know, if we put that up and it passes, great. If it doesn't, we have to look at some other alternatives to address some of the enrollment issues that we have right now. Now, I know we built two new elementary schools, and we built them at a larger capacity than what was recommended to us by the architects. But it's not even an issue of redistricting so much, because if you look at the numbers at Buckeye and Melridge, they're pretty much where we want them to be. And I know there's going to be further discussion with this board about the second phase in the upcoming months. With that being said, we did move some classes and units. All five preschools, we had three at Melridge and two at Parkside, moved to a separate location at Hale Road. We also had two ED classrooms moving to Melridge from Parkside, and two autism classrooms and one multiple disabilities moving from Parkside to Riverview. And I have to say that we didn't expect this. We didn't expect the enrollment numbers to increase so much so at Riverview that we would have to make these changes. And I hate to say it, we were a little bit more reactive, but it was, we didn't expect it. We didn't expect it to happen, so we had to make some moves. I wanted to commend Cheryl Lanning and also Mrs. Weber for putting this together so quickly. Because it was a pretty challenging task to get these units moved into a place where, you know, we weren't there with those units before. And we've had inspections going on and everything else. But in terms of timeline, we had discussions with the ESC to lease the space. We had to discuss transportation for rerouting those students. Teachers had to help pack up their classrooms, too, they're very patient with us. Maintenance moved the classrooms over the course of two days. We had the classrooms set up, we had to get phones installed, Wi-Fi connected. Licensing inspection completed on August 28th, approved for temporary license. We're still waiting for our occupancy permit and fire inspection. Preschool orientation was scheduled for the 27th, and we're supposed to begin on Monday, the 30th. It all happened within, what, two weeks?
Two weeks. We're starting on Monday.
Strategic Plan update. Central Office Administrators, Department Directors, and Building Administrators met with Patty Coswell, Lisa Regal on Thursday, August 19th, for a Strategic Plan meeting. We reviewed prior progress and set a timeline for surveys to go out to students, staff, parents, and community members. Those will all be completed in the next month, we'll get the results from those surveys. We're also in the process of planning for focus groups for parents, community members, and students. Outreach for those groups will happen as soon as we can get to it. Couple more things. We, last time we spoke, we had some testing done on our property for the possibility of putting the bond up. And number one, we did finally finalize the purchase of the property next door to us. I had the opportunity also to walk the property with a couple of the other administrators in Central Office. Right now, it's completely empty. Everything on the property is gone, the boats, and the shed is not in real good condition. We received keys to the house, it was on the 17th of August. If the board is interested in walking through the property, we can make arrangements for that. Just let us know, pop in, and we can just walk over. The Phase 1 environmental site assessment was performed by SME, the company. We received the final report on the 17th of August. We have conclusions, findings listed in the report that include the potential for release of contaminants from unknown or unreported releases associated with the existing underground storage tank, gas tanks, and potential underground storage tanks on the property. The potential release of contaminants associated with the former firing range in the basement of the high school. Not too many people know this, but we do have a rifle range in the basement of Riverside High School. Back in the day, there were, like, I believe it was an ROTC program, and they had some high-powered air rifles. And they would do target practice in the basement. You know, things have changed.
Well, but when you say back in the day, that was my day.
Yeah, that was even before you. When I was principal back in, oh, 01, 02, 02, 03, I called the Lake County Sheriff's Department to remove the guns. So they're gone. They still had the small targets down there, and they had an old mattress where you would lay on and shoot right into a dirt pile. But believe it or not, we did have a firing range. Okay, so there's some down there, I'm assuming maybe from possible lead. The potential for release of contaminants associated with the bus repair operations, oil-water separator in the stained concrete floor in the bus garage. The report includes some historical aerial views of the Riverside campus. And Mr. Placco has some of those aerial pictures for the board. Now, in the meantime, while he's passing it out, we did do the GeoTech survey. It was done on the 16th of July with the boring locations that were located throughout the property. We're still waiting the final report on that. And also, the wetland delineation was done by HZW, we used them in prior studies on property while we were doing our, building our construction. We're still waiting that report as well. Eric, do you want to say anything about the maps?
Yeah, so I passed out four different maps to the board. It's just interesting, the first one I passed out was an aerial view from 1952. So that was obviously before the stadium, before the fieldhouse, before even John R existed, before all the additions were put on Riverside. I think Riverside was constructed in 1949, I think was when it was built. So it's just interesting to see, you know, what the area looked like at the time. A lot of farmland surrounding, not a lot of homes from that aerial view. The dates are in the bottom left corner of each, of each map. The next one I passed out was from 1970, which shows, you know, the entire campus in place minus the fieldhouse and the media center before the buildings were connected. This is before the house existed next door, before the Heatherstone development existed. It's interesting to see those kind of details. Then the third one I passed out was from 1982. Just another, you can just see where Heatherstone was just starting to be built right next to our property. And even the home next door was not there. And the last picture I passed out was from 1994. It appears it's before the John R and Riverside campus were connected, and obviously before the fieldhouse. So it's kind of interesting to see those historical views of the campus, how it's changed over the years. You can see the different ball fields that were added over the years. Kind of cool to share that with the board.
A couple more things. I asked Mr. Carabine to put together just area districts, also what date the school started, and just some issues in terms of COVID counts, just so you're aware of what's going on around the district as well. We're going to pass that out. Some are optional, some are required. And also, I think the board already was sent the guidelines for quarantine after exposure in K-12 classroom settings. I just want to echo something that Dr. Mapden said, is no matter how we feel about the situation, if someone either has it, they're going to be quarantined. If someone's a close contact, it's going to depend on whether or not you're masked, whether or not you're vaccinated, in terms of how long you're going to be out of school. You can tell that for everyone that was up here, they're very passionate, and they agreed on the fact that we're trying to keep kids in school. That is something that we, we're possibly not mandating the mask, right? But maybe if parents are really concerned about them being removed from, from school, they might want to consider the mask in terms of the quarantine issue. That's why a lot of schools, when I spoke to the superintendents around, that is their main concern, was how quarantine is going to impact. There's a question also out there as to whether or not schools can force quarantine. It's my understanding right now that we cannot. It is up to the health departments to determine that. We can suggest it, but we can't force it. So as we move on, we're with one day under our belt, and we'll see how it goes. We're hoping that everything goes well.
So if I could, so I actually attended the Lake County General Health District Board meeting earlier this week. I can't remember if it was Tuesday or Wednesday, I think it must have been Tuesday. And in conversations with the director, Mr. Ron Graham, the, the health district does not have the authority to quarantine. So, so, I mean, I think we need to, to really think very closely, you know, obviously, there's a flow chart from the Ohio Department of Health and Education as well. But we also must have to recognize, I think, is that, that, you know, if, if a parent takes their child to a doctor and there's a note, then, then my understanding is that that is something that would be, can be brought into the equation as well.
Right, right. We sent home, for anyone that's interested, we did send home the flow chart back on last Tuesday, correct?
August 17th.
August 17th. If parents want to look at this, this is what we're following, it's from the Ohio Department of Health. But again, it's my understanding that as they look at different scenarios, it's going to depend on whether a student is masked, whether or not they're vaccinated, and how they approach the quarantine. I have one other thing, too, that I want to mention, is I received a nice thank you note from Chardon Schools to the Board of Education for helping them out, allowing them to have a football game on Friday night. I was there, and everything was, the maintenance department did a great job preparing it for the game. Very nice night. I do want to apologize, though, to JV parents. The next morning, we did clean the stadium, but not to the standard where I think it needed to be for the next game. Although some items were cleaned up, there were still some spills in the stands that weren't hosed down that attracted a lot of bees. And thinking as much, in as much as we prepare the stadium for our neighbors, come Saturday morning, I know some parents, I don't think we're real happy with it. So I know we can do better. Chardon's not using our stadium anymore because they don't need to, so that's not going to happen again. You know, typically, what happens, if we have a Friday night game here, JV's away. So since we were in Perry, Chardon and Glenville were here, but the next morning was JV. So we did hit it right in the early morning, but there's still some bees around there. I also got a call from our board president to let me know that she wasn't too happy about it.
I was there, and I was getting earfuls from people, like, "Do you see the bees?" I was like, "No, I'm standing here against the fence where I always stand." the bees?" I was like, "No, I'm standing here against the fence where I always stand." I didn't go near the fence. But it was, yeah, there were a lot of bees.
I was worried about the traffic with us coming home from Perry with our van buses and our football buses, but it worked out beautifully.
I heard that we held the buses for a few minutes, too. And concession, you know, a lot of the van parents worked concession stand. They could still see the show. Well, they were at Perry, so we had to send some substitutes in there, and I guess they got slammed. I mean, they didn't make quite a bit of money, I guess, if I'm raising a port.
We don't worry about JV parents this weekend. We'll be in Amherst for the game on Saturday morning, so.
That's far.
Score.
That concludes my report.
All right, next thing up then is Finance and Audit, Personnel, and Legislative. Mrs. Grassi.
So we had, the Finance Committee met on August 19th at 8:00 a.m. We reviewed everything that's on our agenda. I just wanted to let everyone know that we did review everything that was on the agenda. We reviewed the August Treasurers Report and all the documentation that you get in your board packet that we approved. We got some updated information, and congratulations to Mrs. Malacher on our welding lab. She, I did, I'm mentioning it.
She was so disappointed with my response at our finance meeting, so I'm bringing
it up. Like, we did get funding for our welding lab, and so it's really awesome. $430,000.
$445,000.
Yeah, so $445,000. So actually, it's paying for the entire welding lab, so that's super awesome.
Yay!
Amazing.
So the fact that it's already done, they will reimburse us for the expenses.
What we found out, they're awarding to us, we're like, well, we decided to already move forward with it last year, and we already built it. So because the state, they came back and said, "We'll reimburse you up to that amount," so we're putting, working through that process right now, put that together.
I know.
And then, you know, after September, hopefully sometime later this fall, we receive our funds and be reimbursed for the project that we.
So I really just wanted to let Mrs. Malacher know that I was holding back at the Finance Committee meeting so that I could have this, like, awesome response at the board meeting. I did it on purpose. Okay, so there we go.
Congratulations. That's amazing.
Right, so we also talked about, we got our bus grant dollars, so we have, how many buses did we get funded?
We received 10 school buses. We had to fly for payment after we decommissioned the old ones.
The old ones.
Because it was an EPA grant, we have to completely decommission them, cut the frame in two spots, drill three-inch holes in the engine block. I mean, there's a bunch of stuff we have to go through, and then provide pictures of all that to the EPA, the Ohio EPA, and then they'll reimburse us, or give us our $200,000 award.
Yeah, so that's great. So we've got some money coming in for things that we did not expect to have money for, so that's really great news. We talked about the contract that we have with the, for the School Resource Officer. That is on our agenda. We talked about the reimbursement for the other deputies that work in our district, and that we're approving that for one semester for right now, so that we can have some conversations about some other things that are in the contract. And we had asked Dan McIntyre to look at that. We talked about potential sale of some equipment and things that we no longer need after, you know, old equipment, old furnishings and whatnot, and possibly having that posted at the Leroy Garage sale. So I'm not exactly sure if we're gonna do that, so maybe I should have said that, but.
We're looking into it September 18th, so we haven't finalized a decision, but I think we are.
Can we move forward with that? And Mrs. Malacher agreed to, like, she did, she agreed, she agreed to, you know, be over there and whatever. Maybe we'll have some Kool-Aid on, I don't know, popsicles, whatever. We talked about our bond refinancing that we had voted on as a board last board meeting, and we were gonna move forward with that, and we have taken that off the table. So while we had approved moving forward with that, if the conditions were right, we decided that we weren't gonna do that. So that's kind of on hold until perhaps interest rates are, you know, conditions are more favorable for us. And we talked about some of the things on the Personnel Committee, or the Personnel Agenda, and the summer asynchronous teachers getting some additional days, because that wasn't on originally. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you. All right, the talk takes us to Mr. Placco.
All right, well, I had six things on my agenda, and I think Mrs. Grassi covered almost all of it.
Great.
Thought we'd be nice and short tonight. Just to echo on the bond refunding, refinancing, because of, you know, us moving quickly is not really moving quickly because of between all the legal requirements and putting together an official statement, getting a ratings, ratings presentation to Moody's to see if we're qualified for upgrade. Interest rates had moved away from us, and it looks like they're starting to come back, but we're still monitoring the market. We did not move forward with a ratings presentation with Moody's because there's a cost involved with that if we end up not doing refinancing, so we're just gonna wait. If the market conditions make sense to refinance, then we will go back to Moody's and reinstitute that ratings presentation, then we'll see if we are eligible for an upgrade, which will result in lower interest rates.
Well, we need to reapprove that.
No, because the board's already approved it, so we, you know, if things move next week, we can move forward with it and not have to schedule a board meeting to reapprove this. It's kind of status quo for now, that one's still in place. And then, the only other update I have is our financial audit started this week, so they're auditing our fiscal year ending June 30th of 2021, so that's keeping me busy in my office atop of all of the other duties that we have. And then lastly, on tonight's, oh, and for Strategic Plan, I think we were looking at in November's board meeting, doing a work session at 6:00 p.m., if that's okay with the board.
November?
In November. I'm not sure if that might change, because things have been.
It says November 18.
That's November 18. So I just want to make sure everyone's calendar is free at 6:00 p.m., and I will confirm for sure we'll be doing that work session at 6:00 before our regular meeting at 7:00.
So let me, I'm gonna add it now. So 6:00?
Six o'clock. On November 18.
You'll send out a meeting request.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is for the purpose of.
The Strategic Plan Work Session. And then the last thing is, on tonight's agenda, there's a placeholder to approve the delegate alternate for the OSBA Capital Conference Business Meeting. I think Mrs. Grassi volunteered to be delegate.
I did?
You mentioned at the finance meeting, but it's still blank on the agenda, so we can still change it.
No, it's fine.
And we need an alternate. And I also need to know for sure in the next couple of days who's planning on attending the Capital Conference, which is November 7th through the 9th. It's a Sunday through Tuesday.
If I go, the only day I probably would be able to go is Monday. I think my daughter and I are out of town on Sunday. My son's birthday is Tuesday.
Are you going?
Jack volunteered to be the alternate. The business meeting is on Monday at 2:30 p.m.
Yeah, last year, we did it online. It was interesting.
I would note that Mrs. Grassi for the delegate, and Mr. Miley for the alternate.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
All right, that takes us to the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove this Consent Agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. We have Finance and Audit first, please.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the Finance and Audit Consent Agenda as recommended by the Treasurer, items A through J.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So any discussion on any of those items?
I have one question. This security rating, this comes from the Sheriff's Department?
Yes.
And the Sheriff's Department got grants to help out the townships? Are they helping out the schools at all, Bill?
Not that I have heard.
Okay. So last year, what did we end up paying?
Which one are you referring to?
Thirty-five dollars.
It's been 30 an hour in previous years. They asked to make it 35 this year, which is in line with other side, this is for the side work for like the.
Yeah, the football games. And then the others for the school security?
For the all-day people here on campus, and that rate's not changed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If not, can you call the roll? Mr. Placco.
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Motion carried. Personnel?
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the Personnel. Consent Agenda is recommended by the Superintendent, items A through E. Do you have a second?
A second.
Thank you. So any discussion on any of these? No? All right, if not, can we call the roll?
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
Motion carried.
We also have a motion to approve item G, Jean Vercity, Jean Harden, varsity golf coach volunteer. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So any discussion on that? All right, can we call the roll?
Jennifer Harden.
abstain.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. Curriculum and Programming?
Motion to approve the items listed on the Curriculum and Programming Consent Agenda as recommended by the Superintendent, item A.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. There is something that's out of order on here, and it would be the Board of Education update. If we have anything additional for the Board of Education update before we adjourn to executive session?
I just want to invite our public to come to the tailgate party tomorrow between 4:00 and 7:00, and then join us for the football game. I know I did that at the kindergarten orientations, invited everyone, so it's always a fun time. So hope to see you there. Come see me in the concession.
All right, if there is nothing else with that, I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session at 8:23 p.m. to discuss personnel matters, appointment and/or employment, compensation, and purchase or sale of property. If I can have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Krenski. Go ahead and call the roll.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Krenski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.